Not a big surprise there. But by even larger margins, Americans feel satisfied with and connected to local institutions and city governments. The author says, "When you talk with people across the board, they are optimistic about their own communities and hopeful about their local futures." The team found that eighty percent of Americans considered their own town and neighborhood to be an excellent or good place to live, and seventy percent said they trusted people in their neighborhood. So, the conclusion is that America is more functional at the local levels than people may think. Now, let's see, what that means for Kent is that we should just continue to keep doing the things we're doing in building community, building trust, staying transparent, keeping an open democracy, encouraging people to participate and be engaged, look for opportunities to innovate, ways to take pride in our city, and don't wait for the federal government to do it first. So, I do, with that said, I encourage everyone that is eligible to vote this fall because it's not just the national politics that are important, as I just talked about, but it's local level where people are the most touched. So, learn about the issues, be engaged, and vote. With that said, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I need approval for the minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
You're approving August 21st and September 4th. Am I correct?
Correct.
Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing.
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay. We're in the public communication. I gotta read a statement, then the court will call whoever signed it. While the law does not require a council to provide time for public comment, we have historically invited the public to make comment, and we appreciate their input. This is a time when a resident and others can comment on matters that concern them. However, if we will not engage in debate, and as President Consul, I reserve the right to end any public comments that are disruptive, embarrassing, harassing, or otherwise objectable, we ask that when you come to the podium, you speak into the mic, that you clearly state your name and address for the minutes, and that you have three minutes to address Consul. Let's go ahead and read the first two people that are coming up.
Abby Kamara and Caroline Stiller.
They each have three minutes, but I'm combining and gonna give them six because they're coming together.
My name is Caroline Stiller, and you want my address?
Yes.
Sixteen fifteen Kent Street, Kent, Ohio. My name is Caroline Stiller, and that's my partner Abby Kamara. We are both members of the Local DECA Chapter at Kent Roosevelt. This year, we are partnering for our project with a local nonprofit called Drink Local Drink Tap located in Cleveland. And if you'll notice on the front page, it's just a Drink Local Drink Tap mission statement as well as the Drink Local Drink Tap website and our own personal website. My name is Abby Kamara. I live on Ninety-eight Stonewater Drive in Kent, Ohio. As you turn to the next page, this is a direct screenshot taken off the Drink Local Drink Tap website. They have touched over twelve thousand students impacted by their wave maker program that they do in schools, presentations, talking about water quality and the importance of water and how water-rich we are in northeast Ohio and how lucky we are to live near the Great Lakes. They also have a whole another section where they take care of our Great Lakes and they pick up trash at Edgewater Park. That's how many pounds of trash. Twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty-eight people have gotten safe drinking water just from this one organization located in Cleveland, Ohio. And a little side note that this organization was started by a female entrepreneur when she was twenty-two years old. She was a Cleveland native, from Cleveland, and just became a passion of water. She realized that some people aren't fortunate enough to have it, and the Great Lakes, we really needed awareness on how lucky we are to live near the Great Lakes. Volunteer hours donated and a number of people that now have sanitation thanks to Drink Local Drink Tap. As you turn to the next page, you'll see access to safe water is not equal everywhere. Me personally, I went to Africa, actually after my sophomore year of high school. I was there for a month with Crew Ministries, and this was very eye-opening to me to realize that people actually needed to walk for water, but I could just go right home and turn on Tap and have fresh, clean water any time I like. So, the global water crisis isn't going to go away on its own. Me and Caroline both realized that, and as a part of our Local DECA Chapter and our local community, we realized that we can actually make a change even across the world. So, this is a project that we're taking on this year. So, our project is located in the village of Kazinga at Kazinga Primary School. Our DECA Chapter would be touching the lives of one thousand two hundred and fourteen students and twelve teachers with fresh and clean water. On the next page, you'll see that the bottom segment is directly from Aaron Huber, who is the CEO of Drink Local Drink Tap. They have different projects online, basically just waiting to be funded by Drink Local Drink Tap. There's such a demand in Uganda that they're located at right now. So, we are taking on one project at Kazinga Primary School, as she said. Right now, at the primary school, water comes from down in the valley. We're run off from house latrines and animal drains. Animals actually share water with humans, and it's a muddy pool of water. Students often get very sick. They collect water for two hours a day, so this cuts into their school day. They have to actually end school. I think it believes, I believe it might actually start at ten, but they would be starting at eight if they didn't have to each walk for water every single day. So, pretty much, they mix this water with cow poop, actually, and then they actually smear on some of the school walls in order to keep the dust down, in order to maintain a better learning environment. They kind of view it as like a sanitation thing, whereas like, since the walls don't have dust on them, and I actually personally saw this when I was in Tanzania, there is a very high demand, especially at this location, because children often fall in and drown or have trouble swimming there because they don't have water to learn how to swim in either. One child has actually already passed away at this specific primary school because they have fallen in and drowned. Okay, so, the solution to this problem is a seventy-meter-deep borehole, which can be drilled and designed to serve students and the surrounding community. Boreholes are human-powered and managed by the community after professional design and implementation by Drink Local Drink Tap. Our personal project would be about seventy-nine hundred dollars for our seventy-meter-deep borehole. That's the project that we chose to choose. So, if you turn to the next page, you'll see a flyer. We are hoping to hold many events throughout the year, but this is hopefully gonna be one of our bigger events, raising more money towards this cause, and it's called Four Miles for Water. The reason that it's four miles is because that's an average that each child or woman needs to walk every single day to get clean water in Africa. So, that is, it's different from a five K. It has a little bit more significance because people, as they're running, can actually realize that this is what children walk every single day in order to receive clean water, not even clean water for some children at, like at this primary school. Okay, so, what we need is permission, actually, to put our race on. If you'll look on the next page, that is our race route. It's an out-and-back run, starting and ending at Dick Stadium. It crosses Rhodes Road, Hodgman, and Thorne. We have notified the police, but we needed approval from you before we could go any further. Also, we have insurance already under rate. That's a big deal for making a run is insurance, and we have that completely covered. So, they'd be on the Kent hiking bike trail, which is maintained by the Board of Trustees, which is what we were told, and the trustees have also given us approval in paper form. For the section that is in Franklin Township.
Do they have to fill out one of our permits?
Yeah, Harrison can work with them.
See the guy with his hand up? There's a permit you have to submit to the City of Kent, and it has to be granted then. So, I think that's the short answer. Dave, you have something you want to say?
No, that's, he does this all the time, so he can walk you through, and if there are street closures, you do usually have to ask council's approval. So, it's not that you're wrong to be here, and it's good to make, raise the awareness and get their blessing too, so that he doesn't have to worry about that as far as, he'll work with the police, and it's good that you've started that process too.
If you get the permit, I think we take the action on the October 2nd meeting for Consul.
What's the date?
That's a committee meeting.
Okay.
It's released on October 12.
Three's October 12?
Yeah, our goal is to have it on November 12 because that is actually when Kent State is on their fall break. So, it would not really disrupt any of the holidays or anything. And then that is also, it worked out perfectly that there are only two sporting events at Bureau Rose High School on that day, on Saturday, which is our, and it clears traffic from the roads that were planning on closing that whole Kent State parking lots.
Most of it's on campus. You're just crossing roads.
Roads and, you know, hatch.
Well, water, that's out of the city.
Right.
Work with Harrison back there.
Yeah, I mean, you're welcome to give your blessing tonight, even rather scheduling committee, with the condition that as long as they meet the typical conditions of the permit through Harrison.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll move that we give tentative approval based on their submitting the paperwork through Harrison.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Second by John? Is there any?
No, I think it's a great, I think, I love seeing young people take initiatives, and I think that's part of who we are in Kent, so.
All right, John, you have something?
No, I think it's great. Walk down the end of my street and watch them.
Anybody else have a discussion?
Hey, bring your checkbook when you're down.
There's no other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We generally do not do business like that, but just for you, we did it tonight.
Nice job, ladies.
Thank you.
Is there further?
That's all.
That's all? Okay. Written communications? Amy?
Civil Service Commission Agenda for August 26th, received August 23rd, 2019. Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for September 3rd, received August 27th, 2019. Sustainability Commission Agenda for September 9th and Minutes of August 12th, received September 5th, 2019. Health Board Agenda for September 10th and Minutes and Statistical Report from August 12th, 2019, received September 6th, 2019. Liquor License Transfer Request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Paying It Forward LLC, formerly of 437 Lake Street, Kent, and Moving Locations to 154 North Depeister Street, Kent, Ohio, received August 26th, 2019. Chiefly returned, no objections.
Move to approve, return with no objections.
Second.
Is there any more discussion on liquor for it? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's it?
Civil Service Commission Agenda for September 16th, 2019, received September 12th, 2019. And Parks and Recreation Board Packet for September 19th, received September 16th, 2019.
Okay. Moving into standing committee report, Committee of the Whole.
City Managers' Report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move items one through nine on the City Managers' Report.
Second.
Any discussion on? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You have a favor to Mr.?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, now, back to the Committee of the Whole. Committee meeting of the fourth, asking for recommendation. We basically already did that, but we do need the approval for the retirement funding policy, am I correct? So, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. All, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Committee Development, Mr. Kuhar?
I move the committee meeting, committee meeting minutes, the special committee meeting on August 21st.
Spray those.
Yes, please. Is one of them separated?
Yes.
For August 21st, 2019.
Second.
All in favor, the motion.
That's not your job.
Aye.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
And I move the minutes from September 4th, 2019. Second. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Thank you, John. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
I move the two actions.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. With the court read title draft number 2019-106 and title only.
Draft 2019-106, An Ordnance Authorizing City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Right-of-Axis Agreement with ABB Installation Products, Inc., ABB IP, Inc., for Site Remediation at 800 Magador Road and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the rule on suspension.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption. Second.
Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the rule for adoption.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption. Second.
Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the rule for adoption.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordnance 2019-106 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 2019-107 and title only.
Draft 2019-107, An Ordnance Amending 505.22 Backyard Chickens of the Codified Ordances of the City of Kent and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Roger. Please call the rule for suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger. Anybody have comment on adopting this? Seeing none, please call the rule for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
And that concludes the Committee Development.
Wait, you want to wait, John?
I do.
Oh, ordinance 2019-107 passes.
All right, John.
Now I'm concluded.
All right. Finance Committee, Mr. DeLeon.
I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes from September 4th. Second.
Second by Roger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
One abstention.
Does anybody want any of the actions split up? If not, I move actions one through six.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on any of the actions? Seeing none, all in favor of the actions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. With the court read draft number 2019-108 and title only.
Draft 2019-108, An Ordnance Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Sell a Used Patrol, Police Patrol Bulletproof Vest to a Retired Kent Police Officer for $310, Waives Competitive Bidding and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen. Please call the rule for suspension.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the rule for adoption.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Ordnance 2019-108 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 2019-109 and title only.
Draft 2019-109, Resolution Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levis and Certifying Them to the County Auditor and Declaring an Emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Roger. Please call the rule on suspension.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Move adoption. Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the rule for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-109 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 2019-110 and title only.
Draft 2019-110, An Ordnance Authorizing the City of Kent to Submit a Funding Application Totalling $1.5 Million and to Execute the Subsequent Agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation's ODOT Municipal Bridge Program, and to Accept the Grant if Awarded with Corresponding Appropriation of Funds for the Sunrise Drive Bridge over Fish Creek and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen. Please call the rule for suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Suspension passed, right? Okay. Now move adoption.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by who?
Tracy.
Tracy. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? No discussion? Please call the rule for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ordnance 2019-110 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number 2019-111 and title only.
Draft 2019-111, An Ordnance Authorizing the City of Kent to Submit a Funding Application Totalling $700,000 and to Execute the Subsequent Agreement with the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, Resurfacing Program, and to Accept the Grant if Awarded with Corresponding Appropriation of Funds to Resurface Magador Road from Cherry Street to Summit Street and Declaring an Emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the rule on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar? Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Jack. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the rule for adoption.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Orness twenty nineteen one eleven passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number twenty nineteen one twelve entitled only.
An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty eighteen dash one forty-two, the current appropriation ordinance passed December nineteenth, twenty eighteen, so as to adjust appropriations, transfers and advances from the various funds of the city of Kent to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen. Please call the rule for suspension.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Prove adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the rule for adoption.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Orness twenty nineteen one twelve passes.
Okay, thank you. With the court read draft number twenty nineteen one thirteen entitled only.
Draft twenty nineteen one thirteen, an ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the operating agreement and all other documents necessary for the acquisition of certain parcels commonly known as two fifty-two to two sixty-six North Water Street, Kent, Ohio, by Kent Downtown Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation, DKC, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the rule for suspension.